Welcome to Team Richardson, where we are one. A community of educators, students, parents, and community working together to prepare our students to be 21st century leaders. Please come inside and join me as we take a look at Richardson and its many accomplishments during the 2011 and 2012 school year. Each building in the Cogga Falls City School District was challenged to have building goals. Our goal one at Richardson Elementary stated that by the completion of the 2011-2012 school year, at least 80% of the Richardson Elementary students will demonstrate proficiency in mathematics as demonstrated by quarterly common assessments. The quarterly common assessments used to measure this goal included the kindergarten skills checklist given to kindergarten students each quarter, the everyday math quarterly assessment administered to students in grades one through four, and the acuity math assessment administered quarterly to our fifth grade students. As you can see by the data presented in the graphs, our students at Richardson well exceeded these expectations. Teachers use several research-based strategies to achieve these goals. The research-based strategies included the use of Marzano's nine instructional strategies in the classroom, as well as the First in Math and Everyday Math Suite. By using these two components, students not only got extra practice in the area of mathematics, but they also were able to build their technology skills. Both of these programs are exceptional uses of technology because students are not only able to practice at school, but these programs allow for at-home practice as well. Also at Richardson Elementary, our students were challenged to use the Rocket Math Program. This program focuses on fact fluency, and by that I mean our students are working on their math facts on a regular basis and challenged to meet regular goals and track their goals and to reach a certain level of proficiency with their fact fluency. Goal number two at Richardson Elementary is the English Language Arts Goal. This goal states that by the completion of the 2011-2012 school year, at least 80% of Richardson Elementary students will demonstrate grade-level mastery or beyond in reading as determined by the Reading A-Z Assessment. As you can see by the charts provided, Richardson Elementary met this goal. Richardson Elementary students in grades K through five were benchmarked quarterly using the Reading A-Z Assessments. A variety of research-based instructional strategies were implemented in order to reach this goal. Some of these strategies include the use of Marzano's nine instructional strategies, regular use of the RAS-Kids Program. This program is a technology-based program that allows students to have regular practice in reading comprehension at home and at school. We also implemented flexible reading groups during the fourth quarter where students were grouped across grade levels based on ability and were met at their own instructional level by a variety of teachers. Centers were used, as well as guided reading groups, and a variety of other strategies. We are excited as we look forward to moving into next year with further flexible reading groups in the area of reading. During the 2011-2012 school year, Richardson Elementary looked at moving from a behavioral system that was currently in place to a positive behavioral intervention support system, or PBIS. Richardson Elementary had a system previously of three Rs: Respect, Responsibility, and Readiness. This year, Richardson Elementary moved to the Richardson ROAR, which is the roar of the tiger. At Richardson, the Richardson ROAR stands for Respectful, On-Target, Always Safe, and Responsible Goal three at Richardson Elementary for the 2011-2012 school year was a behavioral goal or a goal linked to the district's OIP in the area of Conditions for Learning. This goal stated that by the completion of the 2011-2012 school year, Richardson Elementary will fully implement a school-wide positive behavioral intervention and support framework with integrity and fidelity as measured by the checklist provided by the Achievement Centers of America. Richardson Elementary successfully completed this goal and is proud to have our Richardson Many times, teachers ask the question, "Why should I have to teach kids to be good?" They feel that students should come to school already knowing what they are supposed to do. In the past, school-wide discipline has focused mainly on reacting to student misbehavior and implementing punished-based strategies including reprimands, loss of privileges, office referrals, suspensions, and expulsions. Many times, research has shown that the implementation of punishment reinforces inappropriate behavior. Modeling and reinforcing positive behavior is an important step of a student's educational experience. That is why at Team Richardson, we feel that teaching behavioral expectations and rewarding students for following them is a much more positive approach than waiting for a misbehavior to occur before responding. That is why we have implemented our Richardson ROAR, and it has definitely impacted our students as a positive way to impact behavior and change our school culture and climate. A PBIS system is comprised of four elements. These elements include supporting social competence and academic achievement, supporting decision-making, supporting student behavior, and supporting staff behavior. It is important to understand that when developing a PBIS system, that your team must develop systems in which practices are developed and carried out with integrity and fidelity by your staff. Data must be collected and monitored on an ongoing basis in order to adjust your PBIS system to achieve your desired outcomes. At Richardson Elementary, the PBIS team established several incentive programs linked to our positive behavior system in order to reinforce positive behavior. Teachers give out ROAR reward tickets for students who demonstrate respectful, safe, on-target, and responsible behavior. Each month, over a thousand tickets are given out to our students, and drawings are held in order for students to receive prizes. Also, classrooms can receive classroom rewards of Tigers, which they can save for other incentives. These strategies have proven to be effective as we have tracked our data. Prior to the implementation of PBIS in January, Richardson Elementary had office referral data of one office referral per day. I am proud to announce that at the end of this school year, we now have .6 office referrals per day, and this can be attributed to the implementation of a school-wide positive One of our end-of-the-year Richardson incentives for our PBIS program was the ROAR Reward Picnic. I am proud to announce that almost every student at Team Richardson earned this incentive. Goal number four at Richardson Elementary states that instructional strategy data relative to Marzano's nine from at least 100 classroom walkthroughs will be gathered. As you can see in the chart below, the nine instructional strategies are listed. The bar graph next to the strategies represents the number of times that the strategies were observed in classroom walkthroughs. Please note that several strategies may have been observed during the same classroom visit. When Marzano's strategies are implemented in the classroom, a teacher can expect to see a percentile gain in the range of 22% to 45% in student achievement as opposed to not implementing a Marzano strategy. During the 2011-2012 school year, the Richardson staff underwent professional development regarding the implementation of the Marzano's nine instructional strategies. At the beginning of the school year, the teachers were administered a survey to gauge their understanding of the Marzano's nine strategies. In the chart below, the blue bars represent the pre-survey data collected by the Richardson staff. The red bars show the post-survey data collected by the Richardson staff at the end of the 2011-2012 school year. As you can see, tremendous growth was made through professional development in the area of teacher understanding of the Marzano's nine strategies. By administering the same pre- and post-survey to the Richardson staff regarding the Marzano's nine strategies, the teacher effective use of the strategies was gauged. In the chart below, the blue bars represent the effective use of the Marzano's nine strategies by the Richardson staff at the beginning of the school year. The red bars represent the data collected by the post-survey at the end of the 2011-2012 school year by the Richardson staff. Once again, note the significant growth made through professional development in the area of teacher use of the Marzano's nine instructional strategies. The Marzano's nine have been an exciting addition to Team Richardson. As I said earlier, when implemented with integrity and fidelity, the Marzano's nine can yield a 22% to 45% gain in student achievement. Here is a quick look at the Marzano's nine in action at Richardson Elementary.
Hey guys, what you doing?
424.
Yeah, we just started, so there's not...
Well, Emily's in the lead right now.
You add up all the numbers, or multiply or divide, and try to make the four numbers equal 24 where no numbers are left.
It's like if it has two dots, it has two ones.
Two red dots.
Awesome!
Hello, my name's Rebecca. I'm putting points on according grade. I'm gonna guess it's gonna turn out as an L, or it's gonna turn out as a picture, and I love doing it with my friends, and it's a lot of fun.
At Richardson Elementary, we feel that it is important to educate the whole child, and part of this is teaching our students about positive community relationships and civics. During the course of the 2011-2012 school year, several community leaders visited Richardson, including Cogga Falls Ward III City Councilman Ken Barnhart. During this time, Mr. Barnhart taught our students how city council drafts and acts legislation that govern the everyday lives of the residents of Cogga Falls. As part of providing our students with education regarding the community, school board member Mrs. Barbara Gunter met with third-grade students to explain how board members establish a vision for our schools, adopt a balanced budget, negotiate contracts, approve curriculum materials, and policy, and much more.
Can you tell me about Mrs. Gunter's visit?
That they were trying to work on getting newer technology into our school, like you could bring your cell phone, so instead of like going over and grabbing a dictionary, you could just look up a dictionary on your phone.
Yes, that was Mrs. Gunter. She talked a lot about the technology in our classrooms and that students would be bringing technology, especially next year. Do you think you'll like that next year, when you can bring those things to school? What do you think you'll bring to school, Dalton?
Probably just a normal phone that would be able to make me look up a dictionary or look up a word to write.
Hunter, what would you bring to school if you were allowed to bring any technology you could?
Hmm, a DS.
You would bring a DS to school. What about you, Summer?
I would...
Another part of Richardson Elementary is our community outreach. We do countless community outreach projects over the course of the year. Another big project for us this school year was, in October, our students helped break the Guinness World Record for the most people doing jumping jacks at one time. This was part of the Michelle Obama's initiative to keep students moving. We are lucky to have tremendous relationships with our parents at Richardson Elementary. Let's take a minute and see what our parents think of Richardson.
I just think it's a great school.
I think that they look and accommodate each of their personalities.
I think the staff is absolutely wonderful. I think the students are wonderful.
See, we've had a lot of good experiences, all the way from kindergarten through fifth.
It's a... Everybody is very friendly.
The organizational skills that the fifth-grade teachers have provided has been excellent.
Everybody kinda helps each other out.
And the teachers are wonderful.
The parents have been very, very supportive of the buying books and just helping, sending stuff in. All in all, the parent involvement, I think, at Richardson is wonderful.
He's had a lot of wonderful experiences.
All in all, I am very pleased with Richardson.
It is my pleasure to introduce our new PTA president for the 2012-2013 school year, Kristy Lilickless.
Richardson has been great for us this year. They've been very diverse as far as accepting the differences in our family. It's been very fun. We've been participating in lots of different events at the school. Seems that every teacher and every administrator is involved with the kids, talking to the kids, talking to the parents. It's almost become, for us, it's like a family. For PTA for this school year, which I'm very grateful to be the president of and very excited as well, to keeping with the theme of having fun in education, I want to get parents to be more involved with the fun. I want to bring back the carnival. So many exciting things that we have coming up. I wanna do a school supply sale for parents so that it takes some of the burden off the parents. Being that I've been a single mom for so long, I understand all of the stresses of trying to get kids together and get this organized and get that organized. Now I'm a stay-at-home mom, and it's not any easier than it was as a single parent. So I want the PTA to be more involved, and I have lots of different ideas, and we're accepting any all-in extra ideas that we wanna make happen. Constantly something is going on. It's just been busy, busy, busy. It's been a great school year.
We are proud of our numerous community partnerships at Richardson Elementary. Take a look. Sumo has provided us with countless opportunities this school year. In February, our fourth-grade students had the opportunity to travel to Sumo to take part in a Black History dramatization. This spring, our second-grade students had the opportunity to travel to Sumo to see the workings of a hospital. Over the course of the school year, multiple classrooms at Richardson had the opportunity to take part in the CAPOW program. CAPOW stands for Kids in the Power of Work. CAPOW has provided our students and teachers with multiple opportunities in the classroom. These opportunities include introducing our students to employ ability skills in the world of work, exposing our students to a variety of jobs in the community, beginning to link school and work by integrating the two into the core curriculum, and forming strong relationships with our business partners. We look forward to continuing our business partnership with Sumo Western Reserve and expanding it as we move into the future. Our vision for the 2012-2013 school year is to prepare our learners for the 21st century. The 21st century skills that our students will need are creativity, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and commitment. In addition to these skills, our students will need to be higher-level thinkers and One of the ways that we will continue to prepare our students to be 21st century learners is by expanding our K-2 flexible reading group model to a K-5 model. And this is important because the most effective reading instruction and learning occur when the material is at the just-right level of difficulty for the reader. Next year, our students will travel across grade levels in our school community to receive small-group-guided reading instruction. Ongoing assessment will be done, and students will be moved as their reading level progresses. Please take a look at some of the reading groups that have taken place at Richardson this school year.
And if there is a pretty challenging book, we're learning new vocabulary from it.
Good. Paige, what did you wanna tell us about your reading groups this year?
Um, that, um, somebody, like, this is a really hard book, so like, if when we get into higher grades, we're gonna be reading ahead of some of the other kids, probably.
Good. What other books did you guys read this year?
We read Chocolate Touch, First Day School Forever, and The Kid Who Ran For President.
At Team Richardson, our vision is to prepare our learners for the 21st century. We feel that we can best do this through the development of professional learning communities. At Team Richardson, during the 2011-2012 school year, a team of educators was trained in the professional learning community model. We have a plan to expand this model by having each trained member lead a CAT team during the next school year. We are excited to expand this process and know that this will be a successful model as our goal is on student achievement. When we think about preparing our students to be 21st century learners, we have to consider the integration of technology. Next year will be an exciting year for us at Richardson Elementary because we will have interactive whiteboards in every classroom. We will also have IPVO document cameras added to every classroom to enhance student and teacher use of technology. Next year, Richardson Elementary will have access to a media specialist who will be at Richardson Weekly to work with teachers on the integration of the new Common Core, which includes technology standards. Also, the district is offering professional development in the area of Flip Your Classroom, which will include the implementation of more technology in the classroom for our students. Everyone in the district is excited about the Board of Education's Bring Your Own Technology Policy that will go into effect next school year. This policy will allow our students to have more technology in their hands because students will now be able to bring things to school, such as netbooks, MP3 players, smartphones, and other smart devices, which will allow them to access technology and information at a much more rapid speed. It is important at Richardson Elementary that we provide our students with a career readiness path so that they can be successful leaders in an ever-changing society. During the 2011-2012 school year, Richardson Elementary hosted a successful career day. This career day included 14 career speakers from a variety of fields. Students had the opportunity to self-select career choices from a menu and get information on those careers. During the 2012-2013 school year, it is our goal to provide our students with a larger career day and expand this opportunity to more grade levels. We will also integrate career readiness skills into the Common Core through cross-curricular projects, and our school counselor will be providing our students with a career readiness curriculum. We look forward to providing our students with the skills they need to be 21st century leaders in an ever-changing society. As Hillary Clinton once said, "It takes a village to raise a small child." And at Richardson Elementary, we understand the importance of building strong community collaborations. During the 2012-2013 school year, it is our goal to expand our community collaborations. Here is a sneak peek at one of our community collaborations in action as the second-grade students at Richardson Elementary visit Acme on State Road. Teachers at Richardson Elementary will be taking part in the FIP year school or Formative Instructional Practices learning modules. What you will see come out of FIP is nothing new. You will see teacher collaboration, the principal as an instructional leader modeling formative instructional practices, parent communication, student engagement and accountability, effective immediate feedback directed at learning targets, and evidence of learning collected and documented through the use of student data folders. We look forward next year to also incorporating student-led conferencing as part of the FIP Richardson Elementary is proud of our student leaders, and we look to continue building student leaders during the 2012-2013 school year. Richardson develops student leaders through our Strong Character Development Program. We also offer a variety of leadership opportunities, including the Boy Scouts of America, the Girl Scouts of America, Safety Patrol, Office Helpers, Room Guides, Cafeteria Helpers, and Peer Reading Buddies. Richardson Elementary looks to expand our leadership opportunities for our students, and will do so by completing a book study on Franklin Covey's "The Leader in Me." Thank you for joining me on a tour of the 2011-2012 school year at Team Richardson. I hope you'll come back and join us next year as we look forward to an exceptional year of student growth and preparing our students to be 21st century learners. Thank you. Thank you.